Good morning, everybody. It's Thursday, July 11, 2013, nine o'clock, and it's time for a regular Commission Board meeting. I'm going to ask this morning that Commissioner Salter open our meeting this morning. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, before we start the meeting this morning, I'd like to recognize Pastor Frederick Barrow, who is with the Cornerstone Christian Church. Pastor, if you'll come forward. We're going to ask him to lead us in prayer in a few minutes, but before we do, he's got some exciting news to share with us about a great success story that just occurred up in the north end of Santa Rosa County. Pastor?
I appreciate it, Mr. Johnson. I'm a proud citizen of Santa Rosa County, lifelong resident here, and a proud parent of a team. It's called a tri-county team that has succeeded on a local level and won first place on a local level, but also has done something that our area has never done before, and that is win a state title, which is a pretty big accomplishment, something that our area and our league has never accomplished, and that is to win a state title. But it has qualified them to do something that no other team that we can find out, we've called the south end everywhere, to see if any other team has ever won a state title and had an opportunity to be qualified for the World Series just outside of Gainesville, Florida, and Alachua, Florida. And so they have been qualifying for the World Series, which is a big deal. You know, you think of World Series, you know, in our area, we have the Little League World Series and stuff, but when you get up a little higher, it becomes a much bigger deal. It will be televised throughout Florida. They'll have parts of Alachua be shut down. They'll have a parade. They'll have an opening ceremony, fireworks display, and a banquet for them. And it's just a big, big deal to the girls. It's a big deal to our community. And I just want to just to kind of ask and plead, and I don't know that anyone here, I know that it's probably not the best practice to sponsor a team because you have so many teams in Santa Rosa County, but what I'm asking is, this is a team that has succeeded and done something no other team has done and had the opportunity to represent our county in Florida at the World Series. And the total cost is expenses, it's a seven-day series, and I believe that I have dropped off at the county office, a flyer for anyone here. It's April, I mean, August 1st through the 7th. It's a little bit of an expensive trip, and it's going to be, you know, close to, their interfrees are expensive to even enter the thing, and the hotel and gas and food is going to be around $14,000 to enter. And so all I'm asking, $20 is $20. If there's any, you know, any way that any commissioner or anyone's business would like to give to this, what I consider as a worthy cause, is we're not asking to sponsor a team or even help us get to the state title, but get to the World Series and represent this county that we love so much. And I appreciate any support that you can give us.
Pastor, hopefully, everybody will do what they can. I know I'm going to make a contribution, and I think it's great that a bunch of little country girls up in the J- Florida area went and put the whooping on people, so hopefully we can continue to support them. Softball, it's a 12-year-old group, right?
Yes, 12-year-old. It's just before they get into high school. When you get into high school, then you get on the school level, then they go to, you know, compete with 1A through 5A. And so this is, you know, this is a pretty big deal, you know, but anyone has any questions about it? And, you know, you have any questions, how much you want me to ask you to give or anything like that? I'm just kidding.
Who do you make the checkout to?
Sir?
Who do you make the checkout to?
We're making the checkout to Shemukla Athletic Association. You can put just CAA. Any business can get a W9 for their business and a tax runoff. And so we're, Shemukla is actually, and that's part of, Shemukla is part of our tri-county team. And we are, we're going to actually, you know, some people in J has actually purchased some signs to put state champions in the Shemukla field, in the J field, in Fidelis field, and stuff that makes up the tri-county team. And because it's something that no other, no other team in our area has accomplished, so maybe we could put a World Series championship there, too. So we appreciate all that you can do.
Freddie, if you would, after the meeting, if you would send us something with who to make the donations to and give us an address.
Okay.
Don't go away. Thank you. Good luck.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thanks. That's great news, and, you know, it just adds to what we've seen this past week of folks from Santa Rosa County. Little Chloe showing folks that America's Got Talent right here in Santa Rosa County, and then these gal's showing them that America's Got Talent in sports. And so it's, you know, to sit up here as one of the county commissioners, it just, you know, it's something to be awful. I know our Lord tells us not to be prideful, but it's hard not to be in situations like this, so he's certainly blessed us and our county. Pastor, I'll ask you, if you will, now, to lead us in prayer, and after that, Commissioner Salter, if you will, please lead us in the pledge.
Lord, we just come to you and thanking you for being our God and our God of our salvation. And, Lord, I just thank you for these great men that lead our county in the way of business. And, Lord, we do recognize you're the highest government in heaven and earth, Lord, and we just ask, Lord, for your blessings and for your wisdom to be just a part of these men as they handle the business for this county, Lord, that you would just guide them and lead them and let your presence inspire them, Lord. I just thank you for it. Just bless us today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please welcome into place our nation's flag. I declare it a pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thanks again for coming out this morning. Commissioner, thanks for leading us in the pledge. At this time, I'll remind everybody to please turn off their communication devices and so, and I'll move now for approval of the minutes of the June 27, 2013, regular and special meetings. Hearing no changes, I'll approve that without objection. Hearing none, it passes. This time, I'll ask Commissioner Williamson if there's any changes to today's agenda.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin?
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynch?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Anything from staff?
Mr. Chairman, I would note, and on number six, that's an item that I had asked that we add, need to make some kind of determination about the, our storage facility. I don't know that we need design services, but certainly I need to get some kind of direction on moving forward with that. And I'd sent you the email. So that's why it's on there. It may not be as artfully developed, but I mean, we need to make some kind of determination. So it's just on there.
Okay. All right. Anything else? If not, I'll move to approve today's agenda, and we'll start on it. Excuse me. All right. Today's first thing, or next thing we have on today's agenda is a proclamation. And this is especially fond to me because NAS Whiting Field's the reason I came to Milton, Florida. Some of y'all may be wishing I hadn't, but I'm here, and if you don't like it, that's too bad. But I came to Whiting Field in 1970, and the second-class petty officer that read my orders wondered who I knew in the Pentagon or wherever to get such good orders to Whiting Field, and I shortly found out why and stayed here and made this my home. So I'll read this proclamation. If I can get Commanding Officer Captain Conklin, Randy Roy, and Lori Apparillo to come forward, please, we'll read this proclamation this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right. Skipper, good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Whereas Naval Auxiliary Station Whiting Field was commissioned on July 16, 1943, and named for Keith Whiting with a mission of training World War II naval aviators, NAS Whiting Field will celebrate its 70th anniversary Tuesday, July 16, 2013. And whereas Whiting Field underwent a number of different missions during its formative years and subsequently became known throughout the Naval Air Basic Training Command as the backbone of flight training program, leading to the commissioning as Naval Air Station Whiting Field. Composed of two separate airfields with 13 outlying fields in, whereas the total economic impact of NAS Whiting Field on Santa Rosa County is a staggering $1.13 billion, including direct defense spending, retirement pensions procurement, which compromises approximately 1/3 of the county's annual income. But more meaningful impact on our community is that of the men and women serving at NAS Whiting Field throughout the years and have contributed so much to our culture, our heritage, truly making this a better place to live, serve, and raise families. Now therefore be it resolved that the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners join Congressman Miller and the entire community in celebrating the 70th anniversary of NAS Whiting Field, saluting the men and women serving our country and making our community a better place to live. Presented on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners this day, 11th of July, 2013, and signed by me as chairman. Captain, you got the floor.
First of all, I'd like to thank the entire board. One of my charges as commanding officer is we always worry about what we call mission sustainment. And I have to say, you can't do that without great partnerships, and we have probably the best partner, I'm willing to say, best partnership in the Navy when it comes to local communities. And I am, as commanding officer, probably the envy of all my peers out there that have installation commands. So I also want to say that, you know, when it comes to the strategic capability of this country, when called upon to fight its wars, NAS Whiting Field is forefront in that. We produce pilots. We produce the best aviation warfighters in the world. And I have to thank the community and the partnership to be able to do that, not only for years past, but the future to come. So on behalf of NAS Whiting Field, I just want to say thank you, and thank you for your continued support. I couldn't be in a better place. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you very much. If you would, please come up here with us, and we'll get a picture. Thank you. Again, Skipper. See if I can do this without my crutch. All right. Thank you very much. It's a privilege to get to read that this morning. All right, we'll turn now to Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report today. On Monday, we talked about we continue to work with Guff Power Company and do on our site certification program. But I would like to add, following the proclamation to Whiting Field, yesterday over at Pensacola Naval Air Station, we had the State of Florida Military Protection Committee meeting, if you will. They hosted it over in Pensacola, and had all the different groups from around the state talking about what they're doing to protect the mission of their military bases. And it was interesting in hearing people talk about what they started doing last year, or what they're going to do this year, or what they're going to do next year. And as I sat there, it made me very proud to represent this board and this community in everything we've been doing for the last 15 years. Securing land around Whiting Field, providing those buffers, those conservation easements, we're miles ahead of other communities. One of my comments yesterday was that everybody was talking about their buffering programs, and I asked everybody, have they ever heard the Barbara Mandrell song, "I was country before country was cool"? Well, we were buffering before buffering was cool. So I just want to let everybody know that we continue to be recognized as the Navy model and actually the leader in the state when it comes to protecting and partnering with our wonderful Whiting Field partners up north of Milton. So Skipper, I just want to say thank you, and Randy and Lori, and what a pleasure it is to work with all of you. We never talk about us and they because Whiting Field is Santa Rosa County, and Santa Rosa County is Whiting Field. So I just want to say thank you, Skipper. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one bit of information that would be appropriate under economic development. We had our restore, local restore council meeting on Monday, and one of the things that Jeff Helms, our consultant with Atkins, pointed out with regard to economic development is how important regionalism is and the partnership between Escamia County and Santa Rosa County as we move forward, specifically the credit union expansion over there, you know, 1,500 jobs, and then there's projected to be another 5,000 jobs added over the next five to 10 years. 15% of those existing jobs belong to Santa Rosa County residents. Of the higher-level executive jobs that are moving down from Virginia, virtually all of those are locating, they're making their home in Santa Rosa County. So that just goes to point out how important economic development is when we cross those county lines. Just wanted to mention that while we're out here in this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Lynch in another remark I made yesterday. I welcomed everybody to Pensacola suburbs of Santa Rosa County.
All right. That's a great. Well, thank you, Commissioner Salter, Commissioner Lynch. Appreciate those comments. We'll start now with Administrative Committee. Item number one is recommend placement of a blue star marker in the VAR Park as recommended by the VAR Garden Club and the Public Works Department. We spoke about this on Monday. Is there any other further comments or questions about it? It seems like it's moving along pretty smoothly. We appreciate the efforts of these folks, and if you'd like to say a few more words about it, we'll take a moment to do that.
I'm from the VAR Garden Club, and I would like to thank all of you for allowing us to place this marker in Santa Rosa County, honoring all of our men and women serving our country. We selected November as the dedication date for this marker since we're in hurricane season, so we thought perhaps it would be better to have it in later in the year. I want you to know that the Navara Garden Club members will take care of this flowerbed, which will be planted there by the marker. Thank you so much.
Well, we'd like to thank you for all your efforts in this. It's, you know, folks like you that are part of our community, that's what makes our community great. So thank, Martha, both of you, thank you for, thank you for all your efforts in the garden club, for its efforts in this. And I'll move this without objection. Hearing none, it passes. We'll look forward to the marker going up.
Thank you.
Item number two is recommend scheduling a public hearing on proposed amendment to ordinance 2013-03 for proposed, for purpose of clarifying density of specific zoning of property. I do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item three is recommend settlement agreement in the amount of $45,000 for workers' compensation claim for sheriff deputy as recommended by county attorney and risk management. Do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item four is recommend proposal from Glicksman Consulting LLC for actuarial services for self-insurance fund as recommended by risk management and the clerk's finance office. Do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item five is discussion of revisiting the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Land and Water Conservation Fund grant application for improvements to Baghdad Mill Site to align with potential in-kind activities. Sheila, if you would, please. Sheila Harris is the county grant coordinator, and she'll speak on this.
Sorry I wasn't here on Monday to discuss that. I had two kids getting off to camp on Monday. I missed them. They'll be back tomorrow. So this grant, particular grant we had applied for almost two years ago, and in the first year, we did not get funded, but they recently contacted us and said that we had the opportunity to draw down the funds if we still needed them. And I explained that since that time, some of the items had been funded, and they're giving us an opportunity to change the grant application so that we can get those funds. Initially, I included some items that our Public Works can build, and that allows us to claim the work that they do as in-kind match. After further discussions with the state this morning, they are recommending that we request the full $200,000. We have three years to spend the money, so we can always not spend the full $200,000 if we don't have that additional match. But at this time, I would like to request that the changes include some of the unfunded or underfunded items up to $200,000, and then at the point where we get ready to implement the improvements, I may come back to you to see if there's available cash match. But for now, the plan would be to use Public Works to build some of the items, capture their in-kind costs, and use that as match.
Okay, and I believe from your email that I received, that equates out to about $125,000, $130,000 that we've already identified?
Yes. If we simply were only going to do the items that Public Works could build and capture their match, we would be decreasing the request from 200 down to about 125. But if you'll allow me to go ahead and seek the full $200,000 and include perhaps another peer that's not funded, obviously, we wouldn't spend the money unless the match was identified. But we've got plenty of time to sort of see if that match becomes available in the future.
Okay, so we got three years to do a match or match the funding. We are not going to be penalized if we don't use the funding.
Correct. We would just simply do a modification saying, you know, we've decided to only do these items, and then basically the money just goes back to the state.
This project's, I mean, growing and growing. It's become a great project for the community. I'll open the floor now to any comments of the commissioners, but I feel like since there's money's available and there's no harm, no foul, I don't see any reason not to request the full $200,000, so.
And the three years does not start until the grant agreement's in place, so it's, you know, technically about three and a half years from now.
Okay. Commissioner Melvin.
Thanks, sir. That's a great project, but I do want you to clarify something. I heard maybe Monday or maybe in prior briefing that you in-kind, you can't recoup expenditures and call those in-kind. The expenditure clock is hacked when you get the grant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because I thought I heard you say that we could use $125,000 that we've already spent, and that's not my understanding.
Right. Unfortunately, for the work that Public Works is going to start soon, we cannot retroactively count that because it's for activities that aren't related to this grant. So the in-kind match has to be directly associated with the items that are included in the grant application, and as part of their review of the documentation, they will make sure that none of the work occurred prior to the grant start date, and that's just the way most of these grants work. You don't get credit for prior work. Sometimes you can claim like land that you already own, but we don't, we don't even own the land that park it stayed on, but that would be the only case where you could use old match.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other comments? I move for approval without objection for the request to full amount. Hearing none, it passes.
Yeah, if we could just note, Brent, if you'd just note the $200,000, and you'd probably need to authorize the chairman to sign whatever documentation that will require.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on now. Number six, discussion of soliciting proposals for design services for condition, storage, and warehouse facility. Mr. Walker brought this to the board. We all are aware that we're vacating the storage building downtown. Mr. Walker, would you take this, please?
Yeah. When I sent out the email, I mean, we'd obviously need to develop a storage facility. We do have the property of the size that we think it's going to need, that was purchased a number of years ago. We'll go through a conditional use on that as we go through the process, but I don't know that we need, Ms. Jones says we don't, she doesn't think we need the architect. We can probably do a design build, because it really is, I keep saying warehouse, but it's actually storage. There's more storage than a warehouse. It's not going to be staffed. It's a storage facility. It needs to be a fairly large one. We've got a 5,000-square-foot building. We've got racks in there, so we're using the space pretty efficiently. We just need to determine how much we truly need and then just go ahead and build for the future. I mean, that's the point. If I could just get the authorization to develop the specifications for the design, design bill specifications, and we'll bring that to you.
Mr. Walker, one question I had. At one point, we looked at a building in our industrial park that was being, I guess, on loan to the sheriff for some storage, and have we pretty much ruled that out, or?
It's awfully, I can't remember the square footage. It seems like it's, it must be 15,000 or 20,000 square foot. I don't know that it would be too much. Again, that's not what it's built for. I think you could, I mean, we can look at that as an alternative. I think this would be, to go ahead and put it, you know, near your, all your other government functions, I think would be, because it would last another, I mean, it would last, the whittle buildings lasted 20 years. That'd go another 20 or 30. Where we going?
Okay. Comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is not anything new that we're talking about today. It's not a result of the whittle building. This is something I know the last three, four years, we've had discussions about. I know the supervisory elections in the past has expressed a concern about the like of storage. I'm sure the clerk of the court as well, so this isn't something new. This is something that we've been talking about for quite some time, and I agree that we need to move forward and meet those needs and build the right facility versus trying to always modify something.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask, the question's sort of hanging in the air. Have we looked at what we have that may be available that is suitable for conversion? If it's just the climate control we need, have we looked at and eliminated? new. This is something that we've been talking about for quite some time. And I agree that we need to move forward and meet those needs and build the right facility versus trying to always modify something.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to ask the question sort of hanging in the air. Have we looked at what we have that may be available that is suitable for conversion? If, if it's just the climate control we need, have we looked at and eliminated the current storage facilities? For instance, the old Quonset Hut up here off of Dogwood? I know we own that. My question is, have we looked at, at, whether or not we could condition that space if that would be suitable, if in fact, we need to build a new space? That's my question.
I mean, as far as I know, we've looked at all of that. I mean, I'll get with our facilities people and, and double check that, because that's the obvious thing that, that we ask when, when the lease came up. But I, I mean, I verify that. Certainly don't want to spend money, but I just, I'm not, not familiar with a building that we've got of the size that's constructed, that's constructed like a warehouse or storage facility is, roll-up doors, the, the, just a box, essentially.
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think it'd be worthwhile to direct staff to, to develop those criteria and specs for a design build. Actually, just kind of conduct a facility needs assessment, get with all of our constitutional officers, work with them to, to come up with a, a storage facility that's going to serve the, the county for years going forward. We've talked about the need for this for quite some time, and I think we may as well go ahead and, and get staff to start working on it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Jerry Cooley, 6049, Arnie's Way. Mr. Walker, how many square, how many square feet would you take a guess at that we might need?
As I understand, the Whittle Building is probably 5,000 square feet now. We've got, if you've never been in there, we've got racks in there. I, I would hazard, I, I don't know whether, and I don't know if that's fully needed at, you know, 7, 8,000. I don't know, I don't know. Some, that's why going through some kind of process to determine what would be the long-term need would be. Certainly, I would think a minimum would be five. That's what, that's what we've determined that we need.
And, and that's about what we have right now in the Whittle Building? Is 5,000?
That's my understanding. Plus, it's got a, I mean, it's a roll-up door. It's, it's open, except for some secure storage that we have for the state's attorney in there.
Right. And, and what I'm hearing this morning is, we've been thinking about this for a while, but yet we decided to give up 5,000 square feet in a building we already own, which is centrally located to the people who need it. I, I don't, I'm not quite grasping that, but we'll continue that discussion at the end.
Mr. Walker, thank you for bringing that to us. And, Mr. Lynch, or Commissioner Lynch, would you like to put that in form of motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we direct staff to conduct a facility needs assessment in conjunction with constitutional officers and department heads and come back with criteria and specs that we can use for design build RFP. Without objection.
Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. All right. Item number six is recommend Navarre Relay of Life 5K, 10K runs Saturday, September 14, 2013 on Navarre Beach, beginning at 7:30 a.m. I do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number eight, at meetings, and unless otherwise noted, these meetings will be held in this facility. You've got a list, a lengthy list of all the meetings on print for you. It's also, all these meetings are on our website. So if you're, have an interest in a particular meeting, please review that list. This time, engineers report, we have no items. So I'll go to Public Service Committee. Commissioner Lynch.
No items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Williamson for Public Works.
No items, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin, Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six items this morning. Item number one is recommend a bid in the amount of $32,715 from Kaiser Siding Construction Incorporated for a home substantial rehabilitation project at 4361 Pineville Circle. As the low bidder meeting specifications, I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is recommend budget amendment 2013-138 in the amount of $29,755, which will carry forward the law enforcement trust funds and allocate those funds for the sheriff's office expenditure. And they'll be coming from the fine forfeiture fund. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is recommend budget amendment 2013-139 in the amount of $239,000, which will fund a one-time allocation to the Health Department trust fund balance as approved on the June 27, 2013 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is recommend budget amendment 2013-140 in the amount of $2,500,000, which will carry forward unspent funds from the prior year and allocate those to the future capital outlay within the Capital Projects Fund. And I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is recommend budget amendment 2013-141 in the amount of $26,800 for the exterior painting of the county administration center as approved at the March 28, 2013 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six is recommend the county expenditures check register. I reviewed the check register and satisfied myself with its accuracy. Signed it, put it on your desk for your signature, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report unless, well, excuse me. I recommend we move this, approve this item without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, county administrator or county attorney, any further comments? Staff? Okay, I'll open it to public forum.
Good morning again. Jerry Cooley, 6049, Arnie's Way, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My comments will be regarding discussions that were, were held on Monday about RFPs and bidding process. I have done a little additional research. For those who might be watching this, the first item is Attorney General opinion. Attorney General oversees the laws of the state of Florida. It's Attorney General Opinion 99-35. This was opinion that was, that was put out. The question that an elected official asked was, may the commission lease the non-aviation portion of an airport site to a private developer without a competitive bid? And if so, what are the limitations? The response from the Attorney General was the lease of non-aviation portion of an airport site must be competitively bid pursuant to Section 125 dot 35 Florida statutes. Additional question was about how that bid process should be handled. The Attorney General said, to the extent that the property subject to the lease is not for the airport or seaport, the county would be bound by the competitive bid requirements of 12535. Second Attorney General opinion, AGO 8834. The question is asked, is the county required to use competitive bidding procedure to lease county-owned property? If so, what are the procedures should the county follow regarding notice and publication of the call for competitive bids for the lease of county-owned property? The response by the Attorney General is in some, I am of the following opinion. One, it has been judiciously determined that a county is required to competitively bid leases of property which it owns. Two, absent statutorily or judiciously prescribed notice and publication procedures for competitively bidding leases of property owned by the county, it is advisable to use a reasonable procedure which preserves the integrity of the competitive bid process. While the court did not specify notice requirements, the decision in the Rolling Oak case does not relieve counties of competitive bidding requirements imposed by 125 dot 35 Florida statutes and would appear to require that counties comply with a procedure which would assume competitive bidding was used for leasing of county-owned property. Section 125 does not prescribe a notice and publication procedure for leasing county real property by competitive bids. Thus, there's no definite procedure for a notice to be used by county seeking competitive bids for the lease of real property. The Attorney General states that in the absence of statutorily prescribed notice and publication requirements for leasing county-owned real property, it is, it is advisable to use a reasonable procedure whereby the integrity of the competing, competitive business process occurs. They add one case in here, which is Amerit Corporation of the Metropolitan, versus Metropolitan Dade County, generally discussing the purpose of competing bid, bidding as protecting the public, assuring fair consideration of offers and best practices for the public authority, and assuring that the public authority may not arbitrarily or capriciously discriminate between bidders or make the award on the basis of personal preference. I will now read State Statute 125 dot 35. The county, county authorized to sell real and personal property and lease real property. The Board of County Commissioners is expressly authorized to sell and convey any real property, personal property, and to lease real property belonging to the county whenever the board determines that is the best interest of the county to do so, comma, to the highest and best bidder for the particular use the board deems to be the highest and best for such length of term, such as conditions and governing bodies have discretion over that. So I don't think we got to an answer. So I'm going to ask a question, and it's a yes or a no. I've read the law. I've read two Attorney General opinions. Ms. Jones, please describe any legal means or opinions that relieves the county from following State Statute 125 dot 35.
Is that a yes/no question?
That's a question. Are there any legal means or opinions which relieves the county of following State Statute 125 dot 35 regarding the requirement to put everything out for bid?
Of course, we're bound by the statute. The situations in the Attorney General's opinion that you described, and there are more, and there are more cases along those same line, discuss sale and lease of property in what I would call a more traditional sense in that there are more than token monetary amounts exchanged. I think the situation that has been called to your attention and that, that you're most concerned about being the Whittle Building is an attempt by this board to provide nonprofit space for the betterment of the community. There's only token money described in that, and this is really a matter of providing occupancy of a space for a nonprofit, which is a very distinguishable situation.
Okay. I'm going to ask my question again. Is this county going to follow 125 dot 35 and properly bid out as described by state statutes on the business that occurs regarding taxpayer assets? Yes or no? I don't need a speech. Seriously.
When the statute is applicable, we of course will follow it.
So is it, is it of your opinion, so you are going to follow it? Okay. Okay. Well, it appears we're clear then. I, I, I will tell you, and I, and I'm now going to speak to the five county commissioners. To you, there's a lot of times that I come up here, it, it, it's not all, it's not always about, it's not a personal issue with the Board of County Commissioners. The reason this became, to me, a forefront issue here is the protection of the five of you. You are the guys that have to sign off on this stuff. And I think there's a, there's a, there's a real potential for problems down the road. Okay? It appears that on July the 11th of 2013, we have determined that we are going to bid everything we do from here on out. That's what I hear the county attorney say? No? You didn't say that?
No. The county attorney said where applicable, we will. Where this board makes a choice on public property for a nonprofit, especially one like Arts and Cultures that serves our entire county, not just Milton, not just the area it's about, but it's the Arts and Culture Foundation for Santa Rosa County. And this board's elected to be stewards of tax dollars, be stewards of our property. And where this board unanimously feels like a piece of property can be used for the best interest of our citizens, and if our county attorney tells us that by statute, by legal means, we have that capability to do so, then I feel like we'll continue to do so in the future. You've seen many an example of where we've put properties up to bid. The old piece of property down there next to the memorial, we bid it out. It went out to bid. A piece of property up on Stewart Street years ago, when I first became a commissioner, it went out to bid. Properties where they're going to go into private hands, we're going to surplus the property by all means, and it should go out for a legal bid. Or when we have a group of people that come to us that are diligent about what their purpose is in this county, and that purpose hasn't changed, it's to represent Santa Rosa County in Arts and Culture, and we support them as, I would say, a quasi-governmental agency, then I feel like this board has the right to, to make that choice. My other commissioners may not agree with me, but right now, I'm sitting here in the chairman's seat. I know that was a unanimous vote, and that vote's going to stand. I'm not going to sit here today and let you prosecute what we've done in the past or what our county attorney's doing. I feel like we acted in good faith, and we'll continue to do so in the future when our properties are available, or whatever the situation might be.
I, I take exception to your term prosecuting. There's laws and there's opinions, Mr. Chairman.
That's right, and everybody has.
And, and the law seems to be pretty clear to me, but maybe I misunderstood you. Clarify for me one more time. Are we going to always bid in RFP, the citizens' assets? Or sometimes we're not going to do that. I mean...
Mr. Chairman, I would say that any time that we lease property for profit, we're certainly going to bid it out.
Sure. Ms. Jones?
Anytime the statute is applicable.
Okay. Was it appli, applicable in the case of the Whittle Building?
No, sir.
And why was that?
As I explained a moment ago, this was a matter of providing space for a nonprofit that we have longstanding relationship with and that the board deemed providing the space was a benefit to the community as a whole.
Okay. So we're still going to pick and choose. Okay. Well, I guess we'll have another discussion later. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, you know, this has been something that's, was happened over a year ago that we did, we actually did this lease. And I, I think it's a shame that Mr. Cooley's up here, basically, excuse me, he's up here being a puppet for someone else, and I think that's a shame.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter.
Looking back, you know, if, if we're going to do exactly what Mr. Cooley's talking about, we got the Fairgrounds. We, I think we leased that to the Fair Committee for a single purpose that enhances Santa Rosa County, East Milton Boys and Girls Club. I think we did the same thing there because they provide a single-purpose enhancement for the county. So I agree with Ms. Jones. If it's in the best interest of the county and it's, it's a nonprofit organization, then it's a responsibility of the five commissioners to make that decision. And here again, no one's done anything illegal. And what bothers me is every once in a while, when we really try to do something positive for the county, and then we have a few citizens who come up here and try to make it look like something illegal, crooked, and bad, and we wonder why Milton can't prosper? It's because you can't get along. And I know what's going on. We have two different groups, Main Street Milton, Arts and Culture. Y'all need to quit fighting and work together and make, make the city of Milton a better place.
Thank you.
For the record, I speak for myself, Commissioner Williamson. And for the record, Mr. Salter, I speak for myself. This is, has absolutely nothing to do with organizations. This is about what I perceive as a law that we should be following. Now, obviously, we have a disagreement of opinion. We're not going to settle it today. I will seek further assistance in determining what we should do. And I appreciate your time. time.
For the record, you speak for yourself, but where did you get the information from? And why is it a year later after this has been done?
Although I try to keep track of everything that occurs up here, from time to time, I miss something. This, this whole situation over this lease showed up as a newspaper article. I did not realize it had occurred. Now, you've known me for a long time, Commissioner Williamson, take it for what it's worth, I don't agree with the decision that was made here. And, and you do agree, the five of you do agree. I don't agree with how this was handled, that is the point that I am trying to make here. I don't think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers. I think we should always do an RFP or a bid on everything. And that's my feelings, you guys have your feelings, the attorney has her feelings. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to get additional information on this before I'm gonna be satisfied with it. And once again, let me state, just like I said on Monday, I have no issue with the Arts Council. I, I'm out there supporting arts myself all the time, that's not the issue here. The issue here is the procedure on how this was handled. That's my simple point. I think we should be more careful. My belief is, state statutes say that you're bound by that, but I will get an additional opinion outside of this, outside of this arena. Thank you.
Ms. Lawler?
Etta Lawler, 2532 Cedar Crest Lane, Navara, Florida. I think we can all agree, visual arts, performing arts, and historic preservation are important aspects to any community. What I'm here to say has nothing to do with the Arts Foundation Organization. I'm addressing the procedure the Board is required to follow when you lease property belonging to the county. To lease property, the Board must determine that it is in the best interest of the county to do so, and you must use the competitive bidding process. You have no discretion to bypass the competitive bidding process, process. The competitive bidding process is used throughout the Florida statutes, and courts have explained the public benefit of competitive bidding. You cannot discriminate between bidders or make the award based on personal preferences. The war, the award must be made to the ones submitting the best bid. When you look up legislation and court cases regarding the competitive bidding process, what is often referenced is Outdoor Media versus Pen- of Pensacola versus Santa Rosa County, 1989, Florida First District Court of Appeals. It is important to learn from history and the mistakes we make. Unlike the competitive bidding process for goods and services, when the Board is trying to find the low, where the Board is trying to find the lowest and best bid, when the county is trying to sell or lease real property, the Board must sell or lease to the highest and best bidder. In 2010 and 2011, the legislature passed bills, if the bills had not been vetoed by the governor, it would have changed the law, giving you slack in negotiating a lease for a term not to exceed five years. June 1st, 2010, Governor Chris stated the following in his veto letter. Competitive bidding by government entities protects the public's interests and assures the best use of taxpayers' dollars. Laws are in effect which require competitive bidding of county lease agreements. This law is sufficient to achieve balance and protection of the public's interest and enable county government officials to achieve the best bid. Like, if you wanted to do something with a nonprofit, and say we got a building for nonprofit use, get different proposals. Local governments should strive to adhere to competitive bidding standards, because we are elected officials, we have a responsibility to conduct business in the open for all to compete. We should not modify laws in the name of ease in exchange for the public's trust. For this reason, I withhold my approval of committee substitute for committee substitute for Senate Bill 1004, and do hereby veto the same, signed by Charlie Chris. June 27th, 2011, Governor Scott stated the following in his veto letter. The accountability measures currently prescribed include the requirement that the Board determines that such lease is in the best interest of the county, and lease is given to the highest and best bidder for the highest and best use. The requirements of current law serve to protect the interest of Florida taxpayers, and this exception to these accountability measures for leases of real property for the term not to exceed five years should not be created. Competitive bidding is fundamental for protecting taxpayers' money. For this reasons, I withhold my approval of and do hereby veto House Bill 767. The Board relies on staff and places faith and confidence primarily with the county administrator and county attorney. When they drop the ball, it is you, the Board of Commissioners, that gets not one but two black eyes. I encourage you to read and reread Section 125, 35 of the Florida statutes and the two Attorney General Opinions I sent you and that I copied Jerry on Tuesday. In 125 point 35, you have exceptions on airports, seaports, and extending leases if the property values exceed a certain amount, and I think sports franchise things that bring in revenue. So, you feel like, so read, read it, reread it, so you fully comprehend why Jerry came forth regarding the leasing of county property. The public, the public chose you to be our elected officials, and the public put trust and confidence in you to act in the public's best interest. I encourage you, encourage the Board to prescribe better standards and procedures to be used by the county in lease, in leasing real property owned by the county. Public interest first, in the spirit of public service, and do the right thing for the taxpayers of the county. Thank you.
My name is Philip Polk, 4634 Carl Booker Road. The reason that I'm here today is I was alerted in my office this morning by negative, what I construed to be a negative comment in the Navara Press that related to the issue that we're speaking of, so I rearranged my morning schedule so I could be here, because I felt it was important, this kind of decision that was being determined and made. First of all, I believe in total accountability for our elected leaders and for our staff that works here in Santa Rosa County, any position that deals with public trust. I can surely applaud the efforts of our first two speakers as it relates any accountability that they feel that they need to look into. However, I severely disagree with our first speaker in the way that it was approached, and in the way that he presented information that, that I, I feel personally was distasteful. I feel that it was an attack, and as I was listening to his rhetoric, even though there were some things that I felt that he had educated himself on, and I can surely appreciate that, being a man of holding four different degrees, and I, I thirst for knowledge myself, but I, I absolutely have to speak in disagreement of the way that he approached this Board and this staff here this morning. I can surely applaud the efforts of our second speaker in the way that she felt her opinion and what she had educated herself on was being presented, and given her just personal objection to the decision that was made by this Board so far. Again, I believe in total accountability, I have. I've been in business all of my life. When my family moved back from Anchorage, Alaska, we started accounting firm here in Gulf Breeze, and then moved our accounting firm up to the Pace area, and expanding from there, have been there for the last several years. I know what accountability means as it relates to finances as much as anything. I believe we have accountability that is set up here. I believe our checks and balances here in our county applauds that effort of accountability that we have. I have known Ms. Jones for several years. Actually, several years ago, we were involved, a case on opposing sides. I know of her intelligence, I know of her ruthlessness, and I, I know of her, that wasn't the right word, I don't think, this, I, I know of her passion for what she does as opposing attorney, and, and I can surely appreciate her, and, and I can appreciate the reason that she serves in this position. She's a very brilliant woman. And the reason that she was chosen for this position is because of the successes that she has had in private practice, and a desire to sub, serve the public trust. I have to speak on her behalf, even though she probably doesn't need anybody to speak on her behalf, but, you know, due to some of the rhetoric that happened this morning, there's a reason that she's in the position that she is in. She's a very knowledgeable individual, anything that the Commission surely needs clarification on, we have her to be able to turn to, and that's the reason that all five of you have voted unanimously on this particular issue. You gleaned from her wisdom, her years of knowledge, her understanding of state statutes, you made a decision based on that, and even the recommendations of our, our county administrator. I applaud your efforts for that. And Mr. Lynchard, also being an attorney himself, understands legal implications and wisdom that he can apply and bring to this Board for clarity also, and I appreciate that. I do support your efforts, where the other two speakers surely did not support your efforts. I absolutely, 100% support your efforts. Speaking on a personal level, I do think what our second speaker concluded with, the first thing that she said was the most important, is the best interest of the residents of Santa Rosa County. Allowing this nonprofit to come in to this building that has been here since after the flood receded in Noah's Day is surely something that I think is very profitable for our county. I, I sit on this Board, I'm an executive board member of the Arts and Culture Foundation of Santa Rosa County. We have applied for two grants of hundreds of thousands of dollars to go ahead and redo this building, and support this county, and support our schools in this county as it relates to arts and culture of this county. Again, you've been talking about a decision for storage for many, many years, and one reason why is this building cost a tremendous amount to heat and cool for records that are extremely important for our county purposes. It is an old building, it is gonna take hundreds of thousands of dollars to renovate this building. It is absolutely more economical to look for another storage facility for these very, very important records for our county. Therefore, again, as it relates to the last statement of our second speaker there, public interest is the Arts and Culture Foundation that serves not only just Milton, but the entire county. Is it benefiting our public interest? The answer is absolutely yes. It is benefiting our public interest. One of the things you'll see as it relates to grades in our public school is this, that those that achieve some of the highest levels academically are those that have been encouraged to be a part of our bands, or our courses, or our art programs, or whatever they may be. Consistently, you'll see these statistics, and that's what this Arts and Culture Foundation's vision is for even this coming year, is that we support our public schools in a greater way with some of this grant money, to continue to encourage where our funding is having to be cut back, you know, from our county school board, to continue to take the slack and continue to promote these interests, that would continue to promote even greater grades, even in our school. I totally support this effort, and I want you to know as a citizen that I support the ruling that you've already made. Thank you much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yep. Thank you for coming out, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here, thanks for doing so, we appreciate you.
If I, if you will, please, I need your name and address for the record.
Kathy Warren, people call me Kate. This is where I live, have a map of it displayed in my home, because I think it's very, it's a very nice place. It's the most expensive house I've ever lived in, in my life. It's, I've been there since January the 18th. We were supposed to be there earlier, but we didn't get the house built earlier. Before that, we lived in a little apartment in Pensacola. Before that, I was a schoolteacher for 30 years and four months. Please don't negate the four months, because in the classroom, it's very hard to be there right now, and it's a lot harder now than it was in 1978 when I began. I'm very nervous, I wouldn't be here if I, if it were not, I'm not the type of person who usually speaks out, but my husband just got a job, and, and he's out of town, and he told me to be sure to be here. Y'all haven't talked about this yet, I realize that, but it's, it's 25 feet from my, from my new screen porch that I just built, and it's called a concrete ditch.
Okay, so we're, okay, let me ask you, give us just a moment to finish up the topic we're on, I'm sorry, I thought you were here to speak about the topic that we were on?
No.
Okay, can you give us just a moment? I think we got another speaker behind you. We'll finish that topic, and then we'll certainly take the time to listen to it.
Do I need to move? Do you want me to?
If you'll just put it aside, set it aside there for a minute.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah.
I don't mind waiting.
I don't wanna go back and forth from one subject to another, let's, let's go ahead and wrap up one topic, and then we'll address the other.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. The, the, I do wanna speak on the issue we have been covering this morning, but I do have a, just a quick comment on something else. On Monday, Mr. Salter stated that $15,000 to $20,000 was approved for Santa to update economic development information for Santa Rosa County last month, is that correct?
If I remember correctly, about a month ago, this Board approved, I think it was $15,000 to upgrade our webpage, computer systems, those kind of things.
Okay, and had, I had asked Angie what the budget was for economic development, and in 2012, 2013, it was 369,900. Proposed for 2013, 2014, it's 378,740. So, my question is, those budgets are not enough to cover what it would take to update the information for Santa Rosa County economic development? There had to be another $15,000 to $20,000 approved for that?
It's obvious that it's, it's an extra need, it's an extra burden put on them to update it, so, you know, as we review those budgets in the budget hearings, if we gotta vent any of that, I'm certain that we will, but right now, this is a, a proposal of a budget money that we have to get, to get this transferred.
Mr. Chairman, the allocation she's talking, all we did was transfer within the 360, that was just, we didn't have it in a line item that we could spend that money on. All this was, was a budget amendment to, to, to move funds from the, within the department. We don't have the authority to do that if we've not set up a budget line item, so that was from the...
So, that money was already in the budget?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
It was, it just wasn't in there for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. And now, on the next... Okay, thank you. And now on the next, the next subject. I just, I want to say I don't have anything against the Arts Council. I've been to the Dragonfly. It's a nice little place. I think they do a lot for the community. And I know the Arts Council will be required to cover the liability insurance on, on this building. And I had asked Angie for an amount, the current premium for the hazard insurance that the county will be putting towards that. Have you gotten that premium for me yet?
No, I'll be glad to get it for, to give it to you once I have it. It's part of our larger package and somehow it's going to have to be broken down. Be glad to get it when I run those numbers to ground.
Okay. Would it be better for me to do a public information request to get that information?
Whether you've asked me for it and I'll give it to you, that is a public information request. I'll give it to you once I have it.
Okay, thank you. So on top of this building being acquired for $10 a year, I see in, in the lease on page one, under maintenance, repairs, alterations, it reads the Les E., which means the Arts Council, shall be responsible for all repairs required excluding the roof, exterior walls and structural foundations, which will be the Les O.'s responsibility. So the county will also be required to maintain the roof, exterior walls and structure. And now in the next sentence, it's, it's a little confusing. This says, "The Les O.' shall also maintain in good condition such portions adjacent to the premises such as sidewalks, driveways, lawns and shrubbery, which could otherwise be required to be maintained by Les O.'". So one has to be changed, one or the other. Does anybody have that, that lease in front of them? According to this, the county will also maintain in good condition portions adjacent to the premises such as sidewalks, driveways, lawns and shrubbery, which could otherwise be required to be maintained by Les O.' county. So both of them are...
If we've got a typo, I'll be glad to look at that. See, I don't have it in front of me as you read it. It does sound like we...
So that, that has to be looked at? I don't...
I understand what you're saying. We could have put Lee C. in there and give them and expose them to the option of maintaining that, but, okay.
Right. So for, for $10 a year and the cost of liability insurance is what is going to cost the Arts Council for this building. And I think that's a really sweet deal.
Great. I'm glad you approve.
I think they do do a good job in, in the county, but I don't think the statute states that you don't have to bid a project out.
We've been through this two times now.
I'm giving you my opinion. I think I have the right to do that, Mr. Cole. May I give you my opinion?
Sure.
The statute does not state that because you think the organization is, is good for the community, and I do agree, I think it is, it says you have to do a competitive bid.
All right. Let's get this settled once and for all. Mr. Walker, have we as a board eliminated or done anything that we should not have done? Yes or no? I'll give you a yes or no question like Mr. Cooley did. Yes or no? Did the staff drop the ball? You've been accused of dropping the ball, not doing your job. Give me a yes or no, Ms. Jones?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
No.
End of subject. Okay. Next speaker, please.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like for everybody on the negative side of this to also investigate what Arts and Culture puts back into the community. And if you need any help with that or lack of the ability of researching that, I'll be glad to provide you with some of the information that comes both from local information and also the national endowment of the arts.
Mr. Chairman, before Ms. Warren starts, let me just, to kind of set the, I had talked to Ms. Warren earlier this week and, and there's a conflict and I think Mr. Whitfield, Mr. Furman, Mr. Blaylock are involved with. The, the, the house that Ms. Warren was talking about is a new subdivision that was built. There's apparently with all the rain last weekend, there's a, there's a drainage problem. She's talking about a drainage easement that currently is under review by the Engineering Department and, and Engineering and Public Works. So I told Ms. Warren that we could bring this back at the, at the meeting. They've not completed their work. They're still trying to figure out what a way is to handle what's clearly a drainage problem that we've gotten. And so what she's, she's complaining about is the, the alternative, possible alternative of the concrete ending, concreting a, an existing swell drainage ditch that we have as an easement. So that's what her concern is, is the concrete structure.
And I may or may not be in town on the next day.
I understand. And certainly I told her that she could come to public work, public forum, but I'm just, I was just trying to set the context for the board to let her know what you were...
All right.
We bought this house. It sounds, I guess, because I said it was the most expensive house.
Ma'am, you'll have to stay in front of the speaker, please.
Okay. The most expensive house that I've ever lived in. It's actually the smallest that the developer is now building in the neighborhood. So it's no great big house. It is very important to us. This is where it is. It's right on the sound. It's between two sets of wetlands, we were told when we moved in. And we had to be very careful not to take down any trees, not to try to path, try to build a path to the sound. We can't see the sound from our house. We know it's there. We hear it at night in particular. I guess what I'm here about today is trust and mistakes. Trust and mistakes. Okay? I guess I don't trust the county to deal with this because of what's in the bag. And the bag is, was picked up from my neighboring yard right beside me. This has been in my side yard since January or February. I can't remember exactly, but this is step one of the project to try to fix the project. This has been beside my house since January. We have had no less than 50 guests from Memphis, Tennessee, from Uka, Mississippi, from Atlanta, Georgia, my son who is here today, from Murfreesboro, Tennessee. They all love my house. They can't figure out why I would buy a house with this beside it. I picked this up two days ago. Trust, mistakes. Experience is a hard teacher because she gives us the test first, the lessons second. That's a quote from Vernon Law. It has been said that a lawyer can send his mistakes to jail. A doctor buries his and a preacher's failures are sent someplace hotter. But an engineer's mistakes stand as a monument to his ignorance forever. There's a great potential in the planning and implementation of moving the water and the quality programs to build around that. There is a great temptation to put something on the ground, just anything, because people have standing water in their yard up to their knees in my neighborhood. I paid for the house. I paid cash for it. I, I worked 30 years to get that cash. Yes, it hurts when something like this is happening. Less than a month ago, I spent more money on a screen porch. Forget that. That's not even the important part. The important part is I got an email from my neighbor on Friday. I am trying to get him, I can barely read this, to place a cement easement and sod the remainder so, so that you won't have to give up all of your backyard. I have about 25 feet of backyard between my new screen porch and the easement. Were we told about this? I'm not even sure. I told you my husband's out of town. He's a businessman. He takes care of most of this. I'm not even good at this. But we've got an easement. We've been told. We've had, we have an easement and anybody can come from the county and take care of this and we don't have to give them permission and they can come in our backyard. It's already been torn up once and then twice. We've had a sprinkler system messed up because of this. If I get emotional, it's because of all that we have gone through to get this house. This is our final resting place. We actually have our kids' names, our grandkids' names in the cement on the front lawn and our dog. Prints in the cement on the front yard, on the front walk. I look at items on the internet. This is from a freedom blogging.com. It says ditch playing in ditches. I know the dangers of children playing in ditches. I have a five-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old grandchild who spend time at my house. I have three children down the street on the same side and they'll be playing in their backyards. And you're transporting dirty water from their house to my house between two wetlands, which we are supposed, I was a science teacher, which we are supposed to protect. And I have taught children to protect ecosystems. I have taught children to protect their environment. And now I'm in this position. Many environmental programs seem to share a common and maddening characteristic: ready, fire, aim. There is a tendency when in doubt to immediately take action that might theoretically meet someone's demands. Einstein said premature responsibility breeds superficiality. When we go through the motions of compliance with no real intention of identifying and targeting real needs or issues, this had no, no real intention of identifying the problem that happened over the past weekend. Our programs tend for triviality. Are we ready to dig our concrete ditch as was seen on TV last Monday evening? That would happen, would definitely happen. 700 feet of concrete ditch, 700 feet, reaching from one wetland to another. This is not a very sexy topic. Nobody wants to talk about it. Nobody wants to do anything about it. Some money is going to be thrown at it, some money from this guy's department, the one who was on TV. No one wants to speak a bit until after the storm. When the sewage is showing up in the backyard, the lady behind us has been complaining for one year, long before my house was finished. The other characteristic often exhibited by counties and politicians: ready, aim, aim, aim. This is what I believed happened in our neighborhood. The county wanted a larger tax base of Somerset in Gulf Breeze. They gave the developer permission to build. The developer took down the trees, added some sand. You can go by on, on the street before ours, Marie, and you can find, you can take pictures of trees that have been cut down. You can see where sand has been placed all around the new part of the community trying to fix this disaster. Took down some other greenery and they built a fence. The fence stops the people from Fuller Street behind us from going over and clearing out so that this disaster did not happen to them. The lady on television, the lady that this happened to complained. She said, "We've been worried about this for years. Why is it now a matter of urgency?" Where was the engineer? Why wasn't the county overseeing this matter? They then said to restore. No fines of $10,000 per day, per violation, as according to the DEP needs to be, needed to be paid for the changes made that created this problem. Now we have runoff. We have stormwater runoff, pollution problems. It can be expected that sediment from erosion, natural and man-made litter, nutrients from fertilizer use, pet excrement, chemical runoff from pesticides and herbicides that I've already put in my backyard, oil and grease, trace, metals, other toxins, maybe even herb pool chemicals can come into my backyard right now. Okay? There are, there are pollutants from the concrete. I've only had two days to research, but I know that there are pollutant, pollutants from the concrete ditch. My grandchildren, Haley and Savannah, will play in it. They will have an Easter egg hunt there next spring. My dog Tango will drink from it. He already tried to on Friday and Saturday. He tried to drink the water that's already in the ditch from this and this. That did not work. It has holes in it. It's torn up. It was put there for only about a month. We were told when we purchased our home that the wetlands were not to be disturbed. Are we disturbing the wetlands if we send these pollutants through concrete rather than Most of this information that I received and that I've used today came from the Journal of Surface Water Professionals. In the ditch, drainage ditches can cause safety and health problems besides keeping people out. A number of children dry, die in drainage ditches each year. Even during moderate rains, they create a breeding ground for foul smelling algae at best, mosquitoes at worst. Perhaps another solution. I talked with Mr. Walker and I talked with Avis Fairfield? Whitfield on Monday. They assured me that, no, there was no research that had been done on this project yet, but there would be. No, they don't know the cost for this yet. No cost analysis has been done yet. So that's why I feel it's important for me to do this today before you waste your money on something and that I waste my money hiring lawyers, environmental lawyers. I've contacted the DEP. I've contacted the Corps of Engineers in Mobile. I've contacted them in Jacksonville, Florida. I will continue. I called the TV station, WEAR TV. They told me how to get on the public forum here. I said, "What next?" I will devote 90% of my time in these next few months. I say that because I will visit my husband who's on a work assignment, but I'll say 90% of my time, I will voice my opinion, and I don't know how you feel about accepting opinions, to the highest court in the land. The highest court in my land sits right here. Before he came, Mr. Furman came to my, I wasn't going to say his name, to my house on Monday, I got an email, a text from a friend, Psalms 9... I got an email, a text from a friend, Psalms 91:1. I opened it up less than 10 minutes before he knocked on my door. There are other solutions. I went to one website. I'm sure that you can find others. There are other options. I do not want these poisons, these toxins, coming within 25 feet of where I sleep. I don't want that. What do I have to do? What do you have to do to prove to me that a mistake was made? We're not going to make another mistake that could be costly. 17 years ago, I had breast cancer, okay? Four surgeries, chemo, radiation. I didn't think I could do it. Afterwards, they told me I was a diabetic. I'm still alive to tell it today. There must have been some reason God wanted me to stay on this earth. There are people who are crying nightly because of this mess in our neighborhood. They have purchased new homes. You know how you feel about your home. Do you want the concrete ditch with traveling manure in your backyard? Think about it. I asked Mr. Walker. He said there's not any in his backyard. Imagine. What do I have to do? Run for office? I can run for office. I'm retired. I've got 100% of my time. Whatever it takes, I will blast this city until I find out that there will not be concrete ditches between two protected areas of environment, between me and the sea, between me and the Sound. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Whitfield.
What Ms. Warren has displayed on the podium there are the remnants of a perforated culvert pipe, and it was a mistake, but it wasn't, was not the county's mistake. That pipe was put in that drainage easement behind her home and several homes by the builder, and they did it without a permit and with no permission from Santa Rosa County. It was far too small to carry the drainage. We were not aware of this pipe being in that drainage easement until we started receiving complaints from Ms. Warren's neighbors on Fuller Road. Once we discovered that this pipe that is, that was far too small to carry the drainage was put in the drainage easement, we required that builder to remove the pipe, which they did, and to restore the ditch back to its original condition. And that did help the drainage some. That did help. And that's one reason, as she stated, this has been going on for some time, and it's because we were not aware of the problems until the last few months, and then we were working with the builder to, for him to remove the mistakes that he made by putting that pipe in the ditch, and to regrade the ditch, restore the ditch. And in this last event, the residents of Fuller Road still had some problems, and we went and witnessed those problems. And that's when we came up with the idea of possibly putting in a concrete ditch to resolve the problems. The problem you have with, what you have there now, we do have a 20-foot drainage easement, so we do have a legal right to make drainage improvements. It's platted drainage easement. We know that a concrete ditch will work. That's one method of improving the drainage that we're certain will work. It's a grass well now. You can put in a concrete ditch at similar elevation to the grass well, so we know that's one, one option that will certainly work. When Ms. Warren called and expressed her concerns and her displeasure with a concrete ditch, I assured her that we would work with our engineering department, which we've been doing, to see if there were any other alternatives. I don't think, Roger, I think he's had his survey crew down there this week, and I think we're working on those numbers, looking at those elevations, or will be, as the, as we have that survey information. And if there are other alternatives, then they'll certainly be considered. And I think that's as good as we can do at this point in time, is look at every alternative. The residents on Fuller Road, who are, you know, the parallel road to the road in the subdivision, are having some problems. We've witnessed those problems. We do feel like some drainage upgrades are necessary to get better drainage than what the grass, the current grass well is providing. Problem with grass wells, they're not consistent. You get turf buildup. You get residents who place things in there that cause restrictions. And with a concrete ditch or some other method, you'll get consistency in that drainage. You'll get a consistent grade to move the stormwater, and that's what we're after, is to provide some sort of consistent drainage system that will, that will work and alleviate the problem. But I did just want the board to be clear that the mistakes that Ms. Warren has so clearly pointed out were not mistakes that we had made. It's mistakes that were made by the builder. We discovered those mistakes. We made the builder correct those mistakes.
Correct those mistakes. Correct those mistakes. Are they corrected? I wasn't aware. When you, the county administrators, the engineers, a number of city and county representatives, and perhaps even a permit writer, are sitting in a conference room somewhere in this building, talking about the principles and the direction of water on Marie Drive and on Fuller Drive, I want you to please consider two things. Would I want it in my front yard? Would I want it in my backyard? Would I want my guests to see it? That's one. But more importantly, in the sixth-grade science book, we're talking gradient. The sixth-grade students know what gradient is. Please consider how we educate our future citizens. I've been doing it for 30 years. But trying a quick fix is not going to make it happen. It's going to be costly to your departments, but it's not going to fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, I don't think anywhere in the discussion have I heard anything from our staff say anything about a quick fix, so I'm sure everybody's aware now of your feelings on a concrete ditch, and as they move forward in discussing this between engineering and public works, I'm sure they will take that into account.
Please keep me contacted at all times. I have a friend, Amy, who is crying every night because she and her husband purchased a house there that their father-in-law suggested they not purchase. He's visiting this week. He was visiting yesterday when they were out there surveying her property. She had to explain to him. I have a friend named Victoria with a son who lives there. He plays his musical instruments out on the back porch, within 25 feet of where this ditch is going to be. Please consider the person whose pool did overflow, the person behind us. I pray for them daily. I pray for Brian and Dana, who don't want their names used because it can affect him in the Air Force. They're not here today. They came to my house. They're crying, too. They're crying because they can't let their dogs out their back door right now, because they're in water up to their knees. They're afraid their dogs will get diseases. Please, please, just paint a picture of those folks in your mind. Think of them. I will be praying for them, and I will be praying for you.
I believe, and I can appreciate your prayers for everybody. I mean, we all need that.
Thank you.
But I don't quite understand what you're getting at. You're saying that people are standing in water up to almost their ankles or their knees, but yet you're opposed to us doing anything to correct that?
I am not opposed to you doing something. I have an idea. I even have an idea. I think, rather than pouring wet cement into a sewage ditch that's already been dug, I have seen in the past the culverts that, and you could actually level our land out and give us a little bit, that would be a kindness. Low bidding. I heard the word low bidding today, and my eyes wanted to come out of my head. I couldn't, I, yes, low bidding, mosquitoes. I hope you have some guys who can come and spray our backyard for these mosquitoes.
We've got some of the best in the county.
Because I have, I have an itch right here from last night.
Well...
Yeah.
We can't do anything?
We've got a problem. I feel for my neighbors. I feel for my neighbors. They're getting the same thing. For various reasons, they could not be here today.
All right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I live up in North End, and I have several itches, too.
Okay.
Loretta Aiken, 1-8-2-8, Sundown Drive, Navarre. I'm going to make this real quick. I printed out the sheet of information on Team Santa Rosa's website, and it says Shannon Ogletree is their associate director. Is Shannon still on the board of Team Associate Director?
No.
This is actual or perceived conflict of interest by having county employees listed as members of a private corporation? I talked to Joy, who's your PIO, and she informed me that y'all have tried to get Dave Hoxton to take that off the website, and he has failed to do so. I will be calling him today and discuss it and tell him that it looks bad to have this information out there when it's inaccurate.
Mr. Chairman, Loretta, there's no more Team Santa Rosa, there's no more team websites.
They are registered.
We're going through a process of transitioning it from the old team to the county. Just give us some time to make those corrections.
It's registered, though, as a legal entity.
We can't take that away from them. That was their own separate entity. It's in-house now, so just give us some time to transition.
I just, people are asking about it, and so I don't know. And I did talk to Joy on some more information on the map that didn't show our industrial stuff, but thank you for that information.
If you have any, if you have any suggestions, give us a call.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right. If not, then we are adjourned.